Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. This is our regular city council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start this evening with the pledge and Harrison is going to lead us. Roll call by the clerk.
Doug Glassell?
Here.
Dave Frank?
Present.
Barbara Bynum?
Here.
David Reed? Anthony Russo?
Here.
Harrison Hall?
Here.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
All right, thank you. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
All right. The next item is to swear in oath of office for Assistant City Attorney Chris Dowsey. State your name.
Christopher Dowsey.
Do you solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That you I will support if you read that.
That I will support and bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the state of Colorado, and the charter and ordinances of the city of Montrose. And faithfully and impartially discharge duties of the office of Assistant City Attorney according to the best of my will.
I probably should have had you raise your right hand. That way, I've never had an attorney raise their hand to me.
That's okay.
Oh, okay. We'll let it go this time. I would also like to present to you the Assistant City Attorney badge for Montrose, Colorado, and that started in 1926.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to make any comments?
Uh, just thank you so much.
All right. Anything else, Lisa? All right. At this time, we'll ask if there's anyone who would like to make a public comment on any item that is not on the agenda this evening. I see none in the audience. Do we have any online? We have none, and we'll go on to the next item. Approval of the minutes from January 18th, special city council meeting and the January 18th regular city council meeting. Take a motion to approve those.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the January 18th, 2022 special city council meeting and the January 18th, 2022 regular city council meeting as presented.
Second. I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number eight, Dart Commercial Kitchen Small Business Expansion Project. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have before you a project that we talked about at the most recent work session. At that work session, we had the owners of Trattoria di Sofia attend the meeting and share their vision and their business plan and their goals for the next several years with the city council. And tonight, we have the Dragoos with us. If they, if you have any questions, we have Colleen and David here representing Colorado Outdoors. If you have any specific questions about the building, Flex Building, the project overall, I think they're the ones to answer that. But because not everybody who's attending tonight or watching tonight attended the work session, if it's all right, I'll just give a quick overview of the project. So several years ago, we started with our DART program. It's our development and revitalization team efforts to help small businesses throughout our community. It used to be under the DDA and it's always been under the National Main Street Program, but several years ago, we decided that DART would be citywide, not just Main Street, because we have a lot of small business needs throughout our entire community and all of our various business districts. And so at the time, we talked about trying to turn our downtown and other business districts into areas where there's a little bit more nightlife, a little bit more entertainment in the way of food. Distilleries, breweries, restaurants, those types of things became a major priority for our DART program. And we created the idea of having a commercial kitchen expansion program whereby we could help small businesses either here in our community who wanted to expand into larger areas to serve more people or new businesses coming into our community. We would help develop those commercial kitchens, knowing that the need is there with our growing community to have more dining options. And just like we do with most of our other improvement projects, if Trattoria were to leave the facility, the restaurant would be left behind and would be filled with another restaurateur. It's also important to talk about this project and its location because it's very close to the new Marriott that's going in. And as part of the initial negotiations with the Fairfield Inn by Marriott, Fairfield Inn provides some breakfast items, but they don't have lunch or dinner. It's not a full-service hotel. And so this restaurant fills that need. Marriott was very insistent early on that they need a sit-down dining area next to the hotel for when people come into town, they can check in and go nearby to eat. So location's really important.
Mr. Bell?
Yeah?
Just for a clarification for the public that might not understand, when we talk about a commercial kitchen and the expansion of a commercial kitchen, this isn't a publicly accessible kitchen. This is just a commercial-grade kitchen that is hard-surfaced or built into a structure that a building will occupy. So it isn't something that is open to the public, other than people that attend the restaurant.
Correct. It's not like a catering kitchen where multiple people would share different timelines to use it and that kind of thing. This would be specifically for that restaurant and its built-in features like the exhaust hood and that HVAC system, the walk-in coolers, all those major pieces of equipment that are left behind as part of the building.
I guess to clarify, and I think you just touched on it a bit, is that although it is not accessible by the public, it is ours. And then, and then if the restaurant were to leave, it would be there for the next restaurant to move into.
Correct. Yeah. So part of this, and we'll run through the one-page information sheet that we normally do on these projects, so anybody accessing the packets or looking online can see everything in one page with a visual. There's two components to this particular project that we're looking at tonight. One is the Commercial Kitchen Expansion Project, and that's the 250,000. The Shaw Construction estimates are also in the packet, which shows that this is just one small piece of a much larger project. But we're also talking about a small business expansion loan of 88,750 to go to the Trattoria. And that is very similar to what we've done in the past with other small businesses in town as they expand. They need some help and incentives to do that. And it's recommended here that we would do it over a five-year forgivable loan period. And that is enough to help front some of the money to help the restaurant move over, get established. And as they perform and they stay in this location and they meet the needs of the Marriott and the entire community, we'll forgive 20% of that loan over five years to where it'd be 100% forgiven at the end. We're also wanting to highlight that it's in the Flex Building, which if anybody's driven by Colorado Outdoors lately, it's the really long, beautiful building. That's actually the two buildings there. This is on the very far north end, and it would have a space for outdoor seating and outdoor dining, which is really important in a community like ours with the weather that we have. And it also adds more seating capacity to the restaurant. And as they talked to us at the work session, they're doing great as a restaurant. Trattoria is amazing, but it's really hard to get in there. There's long wait lines, they're very popular, and they'll be able to serve more of our local residents, but also become more of a regional destination as well with this expansion. So that's highlighted in here as well. We also want to highlight Shaw Construction will be doing the work. Shaw's building our new police building. They're doing work over in Colorado Outdoors, and this would be just another project, and they've shown to be a great contractor to work with. We would be paying money directly to the contractors like we normally do, and that's why I included a lot of the estimates, so people could see what kind of stuff we would be investing in. Also, using Motley Architecture and Design, a local architectural firm, they're the ones helping on the project to do the build-out and design it and get it ready to go. We've been working on this for several months. It started in the fall. The holidays slowed us down a little bit. COVID slowed people down a little bit, and we're finally getting it before the city council. But we have worked with the Dragoos and with the owners of Trattoria and with John Renfro, who is their landlord now at the current location, to try to get the transition to be as seamless as possible and to minimize any negative impacts on the restaurant and the closure times. So Shaw's already moving on the project. Equipment is getting going and that type of thing, so they're hoping to have a move-in by the end of April is the goal. But it really started this fall, so it's been in the works. Total valuation of the project, about 802,000. That seems to be going up every week or month with the value of construction right now. And so time is of the essence on all of these projects, anything when you're ordering equipment, especially stainless steel and a lot of the construction materials. Employment projections are outlined here, and then their vision is the owners and their business plan. And then at the very bottom, we always try to highlight the financial contributions and partnerships that make up any of our projects. This one shows the private building owners, which would be the Dragoos and their partners, Trattoria, 63,050 of their own money. And then the DART program would be 250 and the city's small business loan of the 88,750. That would make up that total project. If it goes up and it ends up being more than the 802, we're limited as far as our liability and our approval would be up to amount. If it comes in less, we'll prorate that and we'll do less. If it comes in more, then that's on the owners of the Trattoria and the owners of the building to pick up the difference. And again, the Dragoos are here if you have any questions about their side of things.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anthony, any additional questions? Barbara?
David?
Dave? I don't have anything either. We would accept any public comment if there's somebody here that would care to comment on this? And no one online? In that case, I would consider a motion to approve the business expansion loan.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a business expansion loan of 888,750 and a DART Commercial Kitchen Program capital incentive of 250,000 as presented.
I have a motion. Could I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next item is item number nine. It's an intergovernmental agreement with the Montrose Recreation District and the city of Montrose. This is basically an update of the contract that we've had in the past. So Kendall Kramer, would you like to describe this one to us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city councilors. Before you tonight is the intergovernmental agreement with the Montrose Recreation District. This is an agreement that comes before the council on a yearly basis. The purpose of this agreement is to take advantage of the resources that we have collaboratively as well as to save the taxpayers' dollars. We went over this on January 11th at the work session. If you'd like me to, I could go through the redline version and touch on the things that have changed or just go over some of the major changes, whichever you would prefer.
I think if you covered the major changes, we've been through this a couple of different opportunities in the work sessions, and I think it's been online also, so.
Absolutely. So one of the big changes to the agreement this year is that the city shall perform crack ceiling maintenance on the parking lot at the Community Recreation Center. It's on half of the parking lot identified in the exhibit that it's attached to the agreement. We added the Montrose Rotary Amphitheater to the agreement, particularly the maintenance of the turf, which the Montrose Recreation District will be providing in exchange for that crack ceiling, which is about a $3,400 value. So those were big changes. We also clarified the scheduling of events due to the new Montrose Amphitheater, excuse me, Rotary Amphitheater. So that's with Jeremy Master and the clerk Lisa, excuse me. And so that was a change to the agreement. We updated the cost schedule, and that is updated on a yearly basis, as well the hourly rate plus a burden, the burden rate plus a 3% administrative cost. And so that was added to it, and those are primarily the main changes to the agreement this year. So they're pretty big, but kind of smaller, and I guess in scale, not a lot of big changes, if that makes sense.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Dave, do you have anything?
I just want to confirm.
Questions from the Recreation District? I see that you're with us this evening.
Yes, thanks, Jeremy, for all your work on this. Really enjoyed working with him. Jeremy, do you have anything to add about the process?
Maybe he's not hearing us. Okay. All right, well, I think we've been through this in our work sessions. We've had Jeremy and some of the folks, so.
Yes, and I should note that it was approved by the Montrose Recreation Board on January 27th.
All right.
So they have approved the agreement.
I would accept any public comment if anyone has anything. Anything online?
No, it was a very seamless process, involved mostly us and Lisa, but also Jim Scheid and some rect district staff, just really working well continually.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Marty?
Kendall, I just want to confirm, just for the sake of the public, if anyone goes back and listens to this, is that this is a, we're not exchanging cash. This is more of a quid pro quo back and forth where we have services they need and they have services that they can assist with this, and so we're just trading off services.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. We didn't have any public comment. I would take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Montrose and the Montrose Recreation District regarding shared services as presented.
A second. I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, number 10. As we change seats with staff. This item is Bear Creek filing number six, plat, final plat. It's for consideration for us to vote and approve on this. And senior planner, Amy Sharp, will be explaining it to us.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. I think many of you are familiar where this is at. This is the Bear Creek subdivision that's north of town, so it's just south of Lincoln Road and west of County Road 6600 Road. It's approximately 36 acres in size, and the developer is proposing 38 new single-family residential lots. This is currently zoned R3A medium-high density and R5 low-density manufactured housing district, and single-family homes are allowed as a use-by-right in both of these zoning districts. And this preliminary plat, the most recent amendment was just approved in September of last year, so it's very recent. The final plat requirements are as follows. All the lots have to meet the minimum lot size required according to the approved plan, development plan for this subdivision, which it has met those requirements. And all of these surrounding streets must be in place and approved by the city engineer as well as the utilities, and Scott Murphy is working with them on finishing up those requirements, which they're really close. This is the plat, so the first page is just all the typical plat notes and certificates. And then here is the actual plat that shows the lots that are going to be created by this plat. Staff does recommend approval of this plat with the standard conditional approval that is included in your packet. With that, I'll open it to any questions.
Anthony, any questions?
Amy, quick question on what Scott's working on. You said he's almost done. Is that something where we would typically approve or disapprove a project around waiting on, that type of information?
This is typical. There's lots of times where we approve the final plat and then they just have to finish some of the infrastructure improvements, and then he doesn't sign the plat until those things are all done and accepted, and he does the letter of infrastructure completion certificate, so.
Very good. Barbara, anything?
David?
Okay. In that case, I would take any public comment. We have none? Then I would consider a motion to approve the Bear Creek filing number six.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Bear Creek filing number six, final plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Thank you. I have a motion. A second. I have a motion in a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number 11, equipment purchase recommendations. Mr. Scheid?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So I have a purchase recommendation to replace two dump trucks within Public Works. These dump trucks have been utilized within our Parks and Streets Division for the last 17 years. One of them is 17 years old, and another one's 16 years old. So they've been, they've been around quite a while and are quite outdated and are scheduled for replacement. And speaking of that, our Fleet Division has collected money to replace these trucks over the last 17 years and has budgeted that in the 2022 budget to purchase these new trucks. We are utilizing a cooperative purchasing agreement to get government pricing on Peterbilt trucks through a regional vendor, which is Jackson Group Peterbilt out of Grand Junction, which we've used in several purchases in the past, have had good experience. So with that, we are recommending purchasing from them this year. In this case, the purchase amount is over what we budgeted last year for these, but it is budgeted out of our fleet fund, which is meant to buffer some of those things that are above and below what we budget. I think an order placed earlier this year for on Ford Vehicles was under budget, and so those, some things are over and some are under, and in this case, they kind of balance out. So anyway, the fleet fund will recover this amount over, while it's collecting the replacement for the next truck. So with that, I would answer any questions, but there have been no changes to this since we discussed it at work session.
Remind me when we would expect to take delivery of these trucks?
Hopefully in 2022. We are working with Peterbilt right now and actually other purchases that we made earlier this year on our trash trucks and Vector trucks. They are looking at about a nine-month turnaround on the chassis only, so we get a chassis from Peterbilt. And in this case, for dump trucks, they would outfit them with plows and the dump bed. Those will take a few more months after the chassis is completed, so I'm hopeful that we would receive them in 2022, but it'll be close to probably year end.
And we don't dispose of the old ones till we get the new ones?
That's correct, yeah. We will hang on to the old ones until the new ones are here, and we'll probably keep the overlap for a month or two before we dispose of the replaced vehicles.
I think it's good to point out that disposal is, we will be selling those also, so we will have some return off the older trucks.
That's right. And actually, in the amounts that we're seeing, some of our increases in purchase amounts, we're also seeing equally as much increase in resale of some of our older vehicles. So some of these that we higher purchase price, we're also going to see likely a higher return on those vehicles when we sell them.
So am I getting worth more as I get older, is that?
That's exactly right.
Good. Dave, anything?
I do have one question really quick, and it's more of just a point of clarity. I know that we were buying it from the government, and then this is the only person locally that can actually build these and put these together, and that's why we decided to go with them.
That's right. Now, they are the regional rep for Peterbilt in this region, so even if we wanted to buy Peterbilt from another dealer, they would refer us to our regional rep for Peterbilt.
Anything else? Harrison, you got any questions? Would you like to drive one of them dump trucks?
If I could have it as my personal daily driver, I'd say yeah. I wouldn't mind driving that to high school every day.
Okay, thank you. I would accept any public comment. I see none here. Nothing online? In that case, I'd accept a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of two dump trucks from Jackson Group Peterbilt of Grand Junction for the total purchase price of 493,078 as presented.
I have a motion in a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Well, that one was just under the limit for a necktie, wasn't it?
I don't know. I was expecting at least a solid coat shirt.
Bill, any staff reports? Bill, Anne, any of you? How about the youth council? Do you have anything you'd like to pass along to us?
We currently received the Montrose Hardware Grant for $1,000, and we're planning on putting that to our future planning for the Rock the Rack events. And then we had Matt Magliaro come and present to us on changing of ordinances or modifying it for the underage tobacco possession of cannabis and paraphernalia ordinance. And then we brought up a good point to him on his CBD products included in the definition for cannabis, and he looked into that. And then we were discussing kind of what our future projects for the spring look like, and we have a guest presenter coming in to present to us on some different topics about the high school next week.
Great. Thank you. How about city council comments? Anything? Oh, Chief Hall?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I apologize, I broke my computer earlier, and so I'm reading from my phone, but I wanted to talk to all of you about some of our upcoming events through the police department. Every year, we host our Citizens Police Academy, and so we haven't actually taught that now, and I think it might even be two years because of the COVID situation. And so we're bringing that back. We're going to try to limit the class to a certain number of people to make sure that we can properly socially distance and things like that. But that'll be starting on March 2nd. That'll be a 14-week class, and that'll be from 6:30 to 8:30 PM every Wednesday night. And then we canceled our Latinx Citizens Academy here, I think it was in December because of some of the rising COVID infection rates. And that class is now coming back on Tuesday, April 12th, and there'll be three of those classes from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM that evening. So we're kind of bunching them all together, but we're hoping that we can get them done. So we'll start advertising for those classes. Actually, we've already started, but in full swing here in the next week, so.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Chief, there's also an upcoming hiring event.
That's right. Thanks for reminding me. So February 19th, we also have our second local police Montrose PD hiring event. I think the first one was pretty successful, and we actually got, it sounds like, two candidates that might actually make it all the way through our process to become police officers. So good work to those officers and OBT who are helping put that together. But yeah, that will be February 19th on Saturday. Saturday, and I believe we start at nine AM.
Where?
I'm sorry, Montrose County Event Center. Eventually, with the new building, we'll be able to host it right in our training room, but until then, we have it at the County Event Center.
And I'd like to add, too, that the last event was great, and anyone in the community that wants to go and just check out what the police department's doing, what kind of equipment they have, and just get their kids excited about police work, or just to see what it's all about, I think it's worthwhile for members of the community to show up as well.
And I will say, we had several city council members attend on that last event and stayed all day. And we did have a mom come in with her kid and was kind of checking things out. We introduced our city council members and our officers, and she thought it was great, the support from our electeds all the way down, because she was mentioning the community where she came from. That was not the case. And so, that was a really nice touch to have all of you there that day as well, so thank you.
And I thought it was interesting, too. Some of the folks that did come and speak to us had some pretty good questions, and one of them was how we support our police department, so I think it was very positive.
Yep. No, they did. Absolutely. So.
I did.
Thank you.
Well, let's see. I'm down there to item fifteen, unless city council wants to talk about anything else. Could I have a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.